Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Welsh?
Here.
Mayor Eason?
Here. And now we'll have the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we know you are a sovereign God and we acknowledge you as such tonight. But our hearts are heavy with the loss of another police officer just a couple hours ago from Kansas City, Kansas. We pray for their family, Lord, we pray for the police family there and for the law enforcement community across the nation as all law enforcement feels the loss of any officer anywhere. May you just cover them, may you encourage and strengthen and protect and bless and help bring answers, Lord, that are desperately needed in our society. Thank you for our community here and thank you for the things that are happening, we know that as things happen, there can be bumps in the road. So just grant us all wisdom and patience and endurance and peace to see you accomplish the things that are necessary to be accomplished. Be with each of our commissioners and give them wisdom and decisions they have to make, we pray that you would bless each of those presenting before the commission tonight. We pray for the families of our city employees and again for all of our first responders. Protect them all out in this heat, we pray. We give you thanks for this evening, be with our military both here and abroad and their families as well, and we give you praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or relations to the agenda?
I have one addition under Old Business, a discussion of agreement for traffic engineering services for First Street Traffic Study.
Okay.
And that is it.
On favor of the additions to, oh, I move that we approve of the addition to the agenda of traffic study?
Second.
Any discussion? On the favor of the addition of a traffic study at Old Business, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Approve of the agenda, next.
Mayor, I've moved we approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Welsh to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Okay, we'll now have recognition of visitors, hospital update first.
Can everyone see you okay?
Is this what the printout covered the two on this?
No.
This stuff?
That's ours, that's ours.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, don't have a pointer, so bear with me and I'll try to walk you through some of this information. We're gonna start with our normal financial information and then we'll talk a little bit about some strategy that we have moving forward. So two thousand sixteen average daily census right now, and this is what we have considered inpatients is eight point nine seven. We were nine point five four in two thousand fifteen at a change of six percent. Okay, thank you. Ah, there we go, okay. Surgeries down six percent as well, six hundred forty-seven versus six hundred ninety. Our outpatients down two percent and our ED visits down one and a half percent. So you see a decreasing trend year over year in all of those categories. However, we actually did have a little bit of an increase in patient days year over year, we're just not keeping them as long as the average daily census.
Holly, can that be attributed to the loss of a physician?
Definitely, Dr. Yocum retired at the end of January, first of February, and was a very active physician at our hospital and always had been a pretty big admitter. He has not been replaced yet. Dr. Herrera started last August and is still trying to pick up, I'm sorry, yes, Kiesling, you're correct, Herrera started two years ago. Dr. Kiesling is still trying to pick up speed. So we are actively recruiting physicians right now and I'll let Virgil speak to that a little bit. But yes, it can be attributed, patient days will go down inevitably when you're down a physician.
Right. And how's this trending from a couple months ago or?
We've been down all year, year over year.
Basically, same percent change abruptly?
The percentage change has been, yeah, comparable, yes, I think we were at five percent last month. I don't know if we've discussed this at this meeting, but in our board meetings we discuss a lot, insurance companies, especially your Medicare's, which are our biggest percentage of payer, prefer to pay on an outpatient basis. So they put rules in place so that you have to consider your patient an outpatient, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with, but there's called the, there's seventy-two hour rule, there's a forty-eight hour rule, or a two midnight rule. So if a patient is deemed to stay longer than two midnights and you certify that as a physician, then we can call it inpatient. If you don't do that, they're gonna say, no, it's not an inpatient whether you stay the night or not, you're gonna be an outpatient. And so we don't get that average daily census when they're considered outpatient. And all of the insurance groups have really trended towards that over the last several years. It's been a huge impact the last two years for most hospitals when Medicare put that in place and they call it the two midnight rule. Looking at our revenues, and I did change this up a little bit from what we looked at last year, or last month, pardon me. I used to do hospital and clinic side by side and then total. What I wanted to show you this time was two thousand sixteen versus two thousand fifteen, both the hospital and clinic together and then the change and the two. And there's a reason why on the next slide that I wanted to do it that way for you, this is how the financials are presented. So right now, eight point two million operating revenue and that is with the deductions taken out, that's the contractual that we expect to take for Medicare and Medicaid and for those patients that we don't expect any payments for, which would be charity care. So you can see right here, an increase of one hundred and seventy-three thousand. Salaries and benefits, we have an increase of eighty-four thousand. The main increase there is that we did add a physician part-time to our hospital, Dr. Posey. He started practice in May. He actually came and saw patients in May, I believe.
March.
Was it March?
Yes.
I thought he actu- okay. It's, and it's always slow when a physician comes to town. And then we've had some staffing issues as well, trying to staff our surgery department. We've had nursing shortages throughout the year that have caused that increase. Supplies, up sixty-nine thousand, as with everything, inflation. We pay increased supply costs just as well as everybody else does here in town, prices go up. We fill that too at the hospital. And then our other expenses increased eighty-one thousand and majority of that would be our integrity group and the ED. Okay, looking at our balance sheet, cash was at six sixty-nine versus four thirty-eight in two thousand fifteen, an increase of two hundred and thirty thousand. Net AR increased one hundred and fifty-four thousand. I did leave the STKC information, that's our downtown clinic, it increased two hundred and eighty-one thousand, so that means the hospital outlayed two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars more to cover clinic expenses, whether that be payroll, benefits, whatever that is. And we're still working on the RHC status, the Rural Health Clinic. All we're at this point is waiting for the state to come in and survey us, everything's been done, we're just waiting for them to show up. And I believe they have until the end of August to show up at our location and survey us, and that'll be our ninety days. And then we should start to recoup some of this as they start bringing in better payments. Okay, looking at our payables, we'll look at that here on another slide. It has increased four hundred and fifty-nine thousand from June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen versus this June thirtieth. Our debt, we've paid some of that down. Now, there is new information on here in pensions. Dan, you probably like this kind of stuff.
Yeah.
This is new to our balance sheet and that's why I wanted to present it to you, because when you guys do see the audit, you will see that information. Matter of fact, it takes up about twenty pages of our audit. Gatsby sixty-eight came out and said that all government entities have to recognize any pension liability. We hadn't done that before, like the rest of the industry, and so now we're required to. So this is essentially what it would take for us to buy out our CAPERS program if we were to not participate in that any longer. It's essentially what it means, so we had to book that on our balance sheet as a liability. So we're talking upwards of six million and it actually ended up being closer to seven million dollars if we were to get out of that program today. We don't have that option to get out of that program as we are owned by a government entity, but this is new. And if you'd like some good reading material for tonight, I can direct you to our audit, it's fun, actuarial information, but this will change, but generally only during audit time if we're underfunded or overfunded, as with most pensions, and that will be reflected on our balance sheet moving forward. What that did is wiped out our equity and now we have a negative equity on the books. We had equity when we ended the year two thousand fifteen before that got booked, when the auditors came in and booked that, it took away all of our equity. So I wanted you to be aware of that before the audit.
So city payments, which is due to the city, where's that?
I don't have that on the summary sheet, it's in the full financial statements. So when the board packet goes out, which will go out Friday, it'll be in there, and I believe I have five hundred thousand booked on that right now.
It's more than that, but.
The, the two notes.
Eight hundred, it's eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, hasn't today.
The, the two notes.
Well, it's the special assessments, it's the loan that we've given, yeah.
The special assessments are booked in the long-term debt.
Okay.
And then the due to the city, the five hundred thousand would be booked on the short-term for the balance sheet.
Okay, as of December thirtieth, okay.
We can add that line if you'd like in the summary.
That'd be up there then.
Is that a reference?
Yeah, it should be in there, I think, yeah.
Okay.
So, but just to clarify though, the net pension liability, I mean, there's no, CAPERS has that money. So if the hospital just locked the doors today, they wouldn't have to pay five million to CAPERS, correct? No.
Well, we'd have to pay some, yes, because that, that's what their projections are for us to, for everybody to be paid out. So yes, there would have to be some paid out to CAPERS.
But we don't, we won't, so, but it doesn't, we don't know what that is, so it's not.
It changes every year, we have a June thirtieth fiscal year, so it would change, right now that would be nine hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Right, yeah. I'm just trying to say that's a big number that.
It is a very big number.
That is.
And CAPERS is a good program.
Would be very hard to swallow if we had to pay that out.
Yes, it would, you know, and we did explore the option of us getting out of it and technically we could, since we're quasi-municipal and not strictly municipal, but we'd have to pay that to get out of it, was our understanding, so. It's a good plan for our employees, it's very expensive for the employer. We're paying about eleven percent on gross salaries right now. They, they contribute six percent. Looking at our accounts receivable, here at five point eight when we ended the year, five point one right now. I would like to talk a little bit about our private pay, we're, at the end of June, we were just under two point two and this continues to become a bigger part of our pie. As we see higher deductible plans for all insurance and Medicare, of course, increases their deductible every year, we're seeing that steadily increase in patients wanting to make payment plans, and so when you go run that data, almost half of our AR is either uninsured patients or patients making payments, and the majority of those actually are patients making payments. And it's a huge struggle for all hospitals, but definitely for a small rural hospital, when you have half of the money to be collected is patients making, you know, fifty to a hundred dollar payments a month on their balances and so we look at that in detail and really try to work, make sure that we have talked to all the patients that would qualify for some financial assistance, if we can get them on Medicaid or Medicare or help them with their disability and direct them in that path. But this continues to grow and it's a scary number for this small of a facility. Accounts payable, when we talked first in February, two million, we're right at one point five six, not as good as we want to be, of course. Current, six hundred and ninety thousand, not quite fifty percent, we are still making headway in our older buckets and will continue to clean those up as we have cash available. We are currently waiting for the federal government to pay the state of Kansas for DISH, which is disproportionate share hospital funds, we get those quarterly. The federal government has delayed those payments to the states, that's about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for our hospital, we have not received it, we should have received it in June. We have no ETA on that yet as to when the feds will pay the state. Lastly, we did have a kickoff call with Quorum yesterday. The basis of the call was to kind of give us some information about who we'll be dealing with, what their credentials are, what they can provide to our facility. They will be sending us a data request by the end of the week that we have a short timeframe to submit to them. They will run analysis on that to really pinpoint what they want to work on with the hospital, who they need to speak with, where they want to allocate their time. They talked about tracking and monitoring and putting a lot of things in place to help us and to help report as well to the city, some modules and things that we can use with our software, and they are familiar with our software, to really help evaluate where we are and this one says evaluate service lines to find out, you know, what in our hospital is doing well and what is not, and really delving into the day-to-day operations and identifying any, any opportunities for growth. Maybe some program's working really well and we really need to strengthen that, so I, I speak for myself, but I'm excited for them to come in and have a fresh set of eyes on what they can see. You get kind of stuck in the day-to-day and sometimes you miss some of the obvious things that someone else comes in and sees. So I plan on hearing from them by the end of this week and getting them information early next week and then scheduling dates for them to come on-site with our staff, and I'm sure there'll be many more weekly calls with them and then we will include the city as well and update you as we go through that process. Any questions? Virgil, do you want to add anything?
Are your expenditures year-to-date, where are they at as far as last year, are they up? Your expenditure's up from last year, are they down from last year?
One more, there you go. Total expenses right there, eight point three versus eight point one, up two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Okay, and your revenue's up, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, so you're, so you haven't really cut your operational expenses.
Right. We actually have cut quite a bit, unfortunately, things cost more.
But it doesn't show up.
Correct. We did add a physician who's adding some revenue to that, yes. We've done quite a few cuts at the facility.
Why have we not gotten in on that, the Winfield with the expenses? Last year or earlier this year, we talked about going together to be able to buy supplies cheaper?
I wasn't aware of that, you were aware of it?
You didn't? Did I not hear that?
I heard it.
Well, we tried a number of different projects to work with Winfield and one didn't work out.
Okay.
In terms of working on that particular item, one of the things that Quorum has worked with us on is our purchasing agreements. And we're looking at all of those so that we can get national discounts versus state and local. And they have identified some savings for us that will help our purchasing power. And as we expand our clinics, you'll see that economy of scale come to fruition as well. But we are working with Winfield on a couple of projects moving forward. And skilled nursing facility beds is one project that we've submitted data on, that we have some empty beds that we could use for other things. We have another project that we're working with Quorum and evaluating that could use some of our empty beds as well. That could be a revenue producer for us and even more lucrative than skilled nursing facility beds.
Okay. Well, I just kind of wondered, because I heard you talk about it.
Yes, and, and we have some, you know, real challenges in bringing our two organizations together. It's not easy, you know, and if the CEOs can want to do that as much as we want to, but sometimes it's difficult. And we won't give up on that particular endeavor, but it'll take time over, over the years.
Have we thought about looking outside the county to partner with other hospitals?
Not really at this point in time, we used to partner with Caldwell and we stopped doing that about four years ago, four or five years ago, to where we worked with them and provided some management guidance for that particular facility as well as helped them in use their combined purchasing power to help both of us. But one other thing I do want to mention briefly is physician recruiting. We are taking the lead for physician recruiting, I was telling Holly today that I've been in this about thirty years and you almost have to recruit two doctors to replace one of your older physicians because the younger guys don't work the same as the old ladies and gentlemen that are currently there. Dr. Yocum was a big contributor to our census and to our admissions to our hospital. And it's gonna take some time for Dr. Kiesling to ramp up and get there, if he ever does, because he doesn't do OB and a few other things. And as we recruit, we have to keep an eye on how long it takes those physicians to get up and running. And so you'd like to have your older physicians stay until the younger guys are up to full throttle on taking patients so you don't have that fall off in productivity as far as in the volume you would get from the older physicians. We have two candidates, they're not husband and wife, I keep having them married, but they remind me they are not married yet, but they will be, that want to come to our community and we are very aggressively recruiting them. They have some unique talents and skills. Dr. Strickland has some management capability, may even be convinced to be a CEO at some point in time of the hospital, and I think that would be good. He's running the FQHC in Lawrence at this point in time and has a real gift for recruiting. So I'm looking forward to him joining our medical staff. And Dr. Slack is an OB doctor that will add to our OB pool of doctors and give some of the existing docs some time off. And so we're looking forward to having those two. And one of the big advantages and key items, the reason why I want to recruit them, is they came to us through our Friends and Family Program. Normally, we have to pay somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars to a recruiter. That money can be saved right off the top because we didn't get them through a recruiter. We have a family member of Dr. Slack's that works at the hospital and brought them to our attention and we have been recruiting them ever since. And so by this time next year, for sure, we'll have both of them wrapped up and working in this community. We're also taking a team approach to recruiting. We're involving several members of our community in the recruiting effort, making sure that they understand that they have an active part in this whole process and putting Arc City's best foot forward and projecting out the candidates that are coming through our community that we are a great place to work and to live. And so we'll be working on that in the coming months.
What, what kind of a progress report can you give us on the extended hours that the clinic?
Extended hours at the clinic has gone, has exceeded our expectations. We're averaging about eleven patients on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, Saturdays is our slowest day. We're open from seven, five to seven on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, and eight to noon on Saturday. As I said, we're having about eleven patients per night on average in our extended hours and we're only averaging about four or five on Saturday. People don't seem to like it as well to come on Saturday and take health, get healthcare, they do come during the week. And we've done limited advertising for that particular program. We're looking at maybe having to add a provider. We had eighteen patients in one evening during the week and that's a little bit too much for one provider to take care of all those folks in a two-hour period. And so we'll start looking at that particular service, but it has been well received and taken advantage of by our community.
Is there any talk about extending it?
We have.
To, two extra days?
Yes, we, we've talked about that and we have credentialed some more of our doctors to work in that particular clinic. You know, it's a site of service is where you have to be credentialed, just because they're out at the hospital clinic and they have to be credentialed also at the South Central Kansas Clinic as well. And we have started that process to where we're gonna be able to have some more providers available and maybe extend the hours a little more to where we can take on a few more patients.
Has it cut anything off the emergency room that you know of?
I don't particularly think so, you know. We still get some patients that come out to our emergency room that are really not true emergencies and I think that's where a little more advertising about our extended hours program might could help is that we could direct those folks to our extended hours clinic and take care of them there, be better for them as well as the hospital. Hospital ER is the most expensive care that you can get and we'd like to, only if we're all possible, see true emergencies out there. We will never get to that point, but that's the way it works.
But most of the usage of the emergency rooms after the, the clinics close and down?
Most of the time it closes down and that we're the only option in town is out of the hospital.
I understand, I just understand that, but I just wanted to know, is there any timeframe on when you might do that?
Well, you know, once we get the additional providers credentialed, we'll start really getting serious about the advertising.
Okay.
And have providers available. Right now, we're kind of maxed out, Dr. Thompson and Angie Ziegler are two providers that are doing all of that service at this point in time and I think they feel like we've, we've extended them pretty good to where they probably can't do much more without some help.
I, I have a question concerning that, is that, how we talk about ER is expensive and maybe not the best place to treat folks, but from a non-healthcare perspective, just from the bottom line, is it profitable to see these extra hour clinic?
We, we see it as.
Compared to the ER, or does that matter?
Well, ER is, you know, just an expensive place to go as a customer, and put it from that perspective. And it is not a profitable area even for the hospital. Clinics are always gonna be more profitable if you manage them correctly. We feel like we've turned the curve in managing our particular clinic the way it needs to be managed and it can only get better from here as we move forward with all the projects that we've got outlined. And as we move forward with physician recruiting, we've gotta have a solid clinic base of doctors in order to provide patients to the specialists, you know, that's where we're lacking at this point in time, we just need more physicians. You know, I'm not, I don't prophesy very often, but we're gonna get a couple of more here pretty soon and increase that number. And then we, our strategy going forward, as I've been trying to impress upon the hospital board and the recruiting team, needs to be that we recruit someone every year and try to bring them into our organization, into our medical staff because it takes a while for them to get up and running and get the patient base that we need them to see in order to get all of the patients seen that are not receiving care, and that's where you get the overflow to ER is that there's just nothing else available. If I'm sick, I don't want to wait two weeks for my appointment, I need to be seen today, and that's where the ER comes in, to where I can go out there and get taken care of right away.
Are the new ones you're recruiting gonna be hospitalists or are they gonna come in and be?
No, both of them are wanting clinic practices and will be focused on outpatient primarily. I believe as we move forward, we'll have to have some type of hospitalist, we have telehospitalists now at night. You're going to have to have some type of hospitalist program in the daytime because the new graduate doesn't want to do hospital work. They just want to concentrate on seeing their patients in the clinic. And I was talking to Dr. Strickland, he'll probably get on me for saying this, is that I don't think he's seen the inside of Lawrence Memorial. It's where he practices at, he just sends them up to the hospitalists and gets them back when they're done. And that's the way the new physician's gonna practice. You go to Parker City, you see the same thing, your family practice doc is not going to be taking care of you in the hospital.
Any progress on an orthopod?
Orthopod, don't want to tip my hand, but we're getting right around the corner to where we can approach an orthopod to start working with our facility.
I know, that, that was one of the big, big things, they presented as a one-year plan.
And they're in great demand and it's hard to get one to come to a small community like ours. And so we're working on a couple of situations where we make and share an orthopod, that would be the best for our organization. And we have a former employee that is running a hospital not too far away from us that just hired a new orthopod and he has two. And maybe by the first of the year, we'll be really getting serious about sharing him. But within the next thirty to sixty days, we ought to have one that can make a decision as to whether he wants to work with our facility or not.
Two more questions, one's a softball and then a hardball. Softball and then a hardball, right?
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay.
If nothing else, I'll file it off.
That's right. So the first one, and maybe you don't know, and I don't know if we have the time to do, but there was a whole list of things that would be, you know, priorities, next three months, six months, nine months, and a year. It'd be nice to see how we're doing on that.
Okay.
Or if you know anything in particular you could check off, give us a good-
Well, as Holly mentioned, we're getting real close to the Rural Health Clinic Survey. We have worked very, very, very hard to get ready for that, and with all the information that's been fed into us with Winfield Medical Arts assisting us, because they have a rural health clinic that they're operating today. And so they've been assisting us and helping us get prepared. Now we're just waiting on the survey piece so that we can finish that particular project up. And then, you know, with the coding, clinical documentation, training, we start that in August. August ninth is our first day. We've had our kickoff phone call. This is the first real endeavor that I've approached the physicians to get involved. So if you see me drag down Summit, you know, the answer was no. But I, they have been enthused about it. It can make a difference to the reimbursement for our hospital, and so I think they'll be very cooperative in every way possible to make that happen. And, you know, we have a couple of other projects. I just soon not talk about them in public at this point in time that are hanging in the winds, in the wings of, and just about ready to launch, but we just need to-
Well, it'd be nice, maybe next month, to just put the list and-
I'll get the list.
Check, check in front of it and say, hey, we did that, good job.
And I'll even send it to you prior to the meeting.
And now the hardball-
Okay.
Is the coming bond and interest payment. Do you know, or do you have a projection on how we-
I met with the city manager and some of his staff last Friday. We have a limited amount of money that we are going to be able to bring to the table. We've discussed what we can bring. It's gonna be hopefully my last time that you have to serve me that hardball. We were successful in getting the sales tax passed with the chief of police's help and advice. He was my mentor on that, on what to do and what things to, what process to follow. And I did everything he told me to do to the letter, and we were successful because he was successful in Lawrence, using that particular approach. And so, once we get past this bond payment, I hope I can come back, and that's a non-issue going forward, at least.
I'm waiting.
I, I did give him a number-
Okay.
Last Friday, that we're gonna try to make available to the city to help.
Okay.
So refer to-
Which was?
Deflected to the-
Let him handle that one.
A hundred thousand dollars.
And that's gonna pinch us pretty good, you know, because it's really slow for the summer.
And what's due? Eight, nine hundred thousand?
Uh, more than that.
Okay.
We're doing it here.
Okay, then.
All righty. The rural healthcare thing you were talking about, the clinic downtown's already got that, correct?
No, the Winfield Medical Arts is the one that's got that. The clinic downtown is the one waiting to be served.
Okay, I thought we'd already, already got that.
We, we, hopefully by the end of August, that'll be checked off our list of things to do, and we'll be receiving a higher reimbursement for those patients that are coming.
Can we do the same thing at the hospital?
We are looking at that. Quorum is uncertain as to, because of the specialists that operate there, whether that would be the best thing to do or to redesignate it as something else. And so that's gonna be a part of this study process is to determine what is the best approach. We think at least a rural health clinic would be, would make better payments, but they're waffling on that a little bit as to whether it would or won't. And I don't wanna take money away from it. I want it to improve, not to decrease what they're being paid. Anything else?
Goodbye.
Thank you. Appreciate all your support.
I wanna go over this sheet. Well, let's go over this later on. Let's let the, since we have the museum here and the library, we can spend a little bit more time on this later on.
All right, next is the museum.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. We wanted to give an update on where we are with the museum and our budget request. This is currently our board of directors, which has not changed from the last year. This is a little bit of our progress on various things, everything from facilities rentals to our admission sales. Three years ago, we appeared before you, and we talked about the kind of benchmarks we were gonna have to make progress towards being on our own. And so this gives you a little bit of a snapshot of what we've been successful on and some things we still need improvement on. Our travel information center did open in oh five, and as you can see, we had quite a lot of traffic in oh five, and it's even been bigger in oh six. We expect that to continue to grow as it appears in the Kansas Magazine and some of the other publications that are, of course, free to us because we are a travel information center. The travel information center requires the museum to be open six days a week, which we are, including both days on the weekend. Membership, membership has continually grown. We had a little dip at the end of two thousand fourteen where we dropped way back, but as of June one, we are over a thousand members. That's the largest that I have any records showing that we have ever hit. We continue to use volunteers for a lot of our labor, as you can see from the hours there. A lot of our projects, including preservation, exhibit repair, exhibit maintenance, are all being done through those volunteer hours, and that grant was extended through two thousand seventeen. We did create a foundation to start some fundraising activity to benefit our future, and that will be kicked off at our fiftieth anniversary, which is this Saturday. As far as other activities, we agreed three years ago on was tour bus development. We have made great strides in that. We now work with four different bus companies, and we basically go and pitch to them and set up tours based on other activities they have going on. We have actively continued to pursue grants. We have applied for thirteen this year. We had five denied, four approved, and four are still pending. I have another seven grants that are slated to go out through the rest, through the end of this year that we're trying for, so we do spend a lot of time grant writing, trying to find anything we can out there.
What's your average grant?
I'm sorry.
What's your average grant?
The average amount we ask for, probably about ten thousand.
Okay.
We had one this year through the museums across America that we asked for a hundred and fifty thousand, but that one is still pending. We continue to work on preservation. We have made some collaborative relationships with the Gerald Ford Center, the National Archives, some people who can bring resources to us that we could really, in no other way, tap into. There has not been really a cost attached to that. I've been able to trade them giving talks, presentations, whatever I could to try to cover the cost of a lot of that. And as you know, they have the expertise, but you really have to become a partner with them to be able to use them and afford to use them. This is the demographic on our current membership, which is the thousand thirteen members. The Arc City resident portion has decreased slightly from last year. Winfield increased, and then other Cali County, that would be any other city in Cali County besides Winfield and Arc City. Our, the number of trips each member makes to the museum a year has increased. That was a goal I had. I didn't want members to just join and only come out every five years because they were just seeing the same stuff over and over and over again. So we do rotate things on a ninety-day basis. There's a lot of work involved in that, but our volunteers do a lot of that, that labor for me.
Can you go back that one side? I just got a quick question.
If I can figure out how to go back, I'd love to.
Okay, yeah, you're there.
I'm there, okay.
Yeah. The average number of visits during two thousand fifteen, that's member-only visits?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. What about just overall visits, as far as how many individuals have actually went to the museum? Because-
I can tell you for this year, for this year through the end of May, we had three thousand three hundred and ninety-eight visitors. As compared to the year before, it was two thousand eight hundred and twelve. I can't tell you for two thousand fifteen. I don't have that number on me.
Thank you.
Some of the things I'd like to see us do is, of course, continue to work with the CBB and all of the other partners here. Bus tours are really hard unless you can get another activity for them while they're here. One of the things we've capitalized on is our proximity towards people heading to the casino on bus trips. And, you know, it's, you, you almost have to work with what you have and what's available to you, so we would, of course, love to get other partners involved in that and work with the CBB on that a little bit more. We will apply. We applied to be a KMA conference host back in two thousand thirteen. We did not get it because we did not have the hotel available to us, so we will try that later this year for two thousand nineteen. We'd like to open three exhibits. That's sort of a goal, three large exhibits, and then we rotate artifacts in and out of all of our other areas. We do have a partnership with AARP. We do get a number of our bus leads and tour group leads through them. That's been a really good partnership. They do require you to give a significant discount to the people who come through there, but a lot of those folks we wouldn't get anyway, so it's, it's been profitable for us to do that. We have been working with the Etna Zoa Conservancy on maybe integrating some hands-on activities on our farm, going back to the time when the Indians were here, sort of kinda starting to inform the community about that project and kind of aligning ourselves with them so that, you know, we're, we're both working for the same objective. We do have an exhibit that WSU is putting together that will be in the museum in the fall about the Etna Zoa project. We continue to do inventory. We have everything calculated. We know where everything is. We know what is located in the museum, and of course, we update that as things go in or out. Some of the funds for two thousand seventeen that were asked for, one issue is we do have to be open seven days a week, so staffing for the travel information center, there was a few funds in there to help cover that extra day that we have. We also are required to be open all of the holidays during the high travel season, which would be Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day. We have started a relationship with ball tournaments and some other folks, car show, where we could maybe get, bus some people to the museum, maybe people who are waiting in between events or whatnot. We would like to work more in-depth with other casinos, AARP, any way we can find to get people to the museum. Another way we've gotten some of our tour groups is through InTrust Bank. Their activities, if you, if you market yourself in Oklahoma City, it's about a halfway stop between here and the, and the arena, so we do get some buses who stop to see that prior to going on to an event. So we've tried to think a little bit out of the box on that. The volunteer grant is wonderful. It provides labor and people that we would never be able to, to use. And then, of course, we're collaborating with the Etna Zoa Conservancy.
Sandy, do you have, on the travel information center, do you have to have a museum staff person there on those days, or can you get volunteers to come in and do that?
The, the situation is if you have it inside your building, then you have to be open. So it does require a museum person-
Okay.
Because I don't have any way to-
Shutting off.
Shut that off from anything. And, of course, it's a great boon for the museum, so I'm not complaining in that regard, but it does just mean we have to be open those extra time periods. We talked a little bit about the hands-on activities. We continue to market now to Oklahoma schools to bring their, their kids up. Now, the museum is free to Cali County schools, but the Oklahoma schools do pay, and they haven't had quite the budget cut situation that our schools have had, so we've been fairly successful at doing that. We constantly talk to the teachers that bring their classes through. How could we improve? What would make it more kid-friendly? You know, we wanna get that younger blood involved as well. A little bit of technology integration, as all of you know, the apps and the Pokemon Go and all that good stuff is what everybody's into. Haven't made a lot of progress in that area. It seems like technology integration has kind of had to go by the wayside the last couple of years.
Do they have a Pokemon out there then? You know?
Yes.
We actually had someone come and tell us we had one at the fountain, or the torch out front.
Really?
Yeah.
We, we, we have one on, on the barn door. Not excited about that at all.
Yeah.
And I had even, you know, they had to show me, 'cause, you know.
That's crazy.
Um, we have been working on a World War One project. The centennial anniversary for World War One is coming up. We have a military historian who has gone out to the local cemeteries. He's been documenting all of the people who were World War One veterans. There are a number of famous people who are actually buried here from World War One, but I don't think anybody really knew they were here, so we've been doing some research back on those names, you know, how did they end up here? What was, kinda what was the story? And then we're gonna turn that into an actual exhibit. We'll also integrate all of the World War One vets from this area and also people who have World War One vets that are family members. We continue to digitize our records. I'm not sure we'll ever be done with that, but I try to at least get ten thousand a year. Eventually, we'll, we'll hit the end. We do, did find some glass negatives. They are actually by a Civil War photographer by the name of Isaac Von Sol. We ha- have always had them, but we didn't know who the photographer was in them. We've now had that verified through the Historical Society, and that will be a great exhibit boon to us because there are a number of people that are very interested in his work, so we hope to do something with that in oh seven.
Those take, to take care of them properly, it takes a lot of, a lot of preparation, investment. I mean, like, you can't have them out in the sunlight and stuff like that.
Right. They have to actually, what I have been doing is taking them to the Ford Center, who knows how to, you're talking about the glass negatives, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're the ones who know how to take the images off, and they can fine-tune the detail. They also know this particular photographer's work. They know how he documents, and, and so they've been doing a lot of that for me because, yeah, I don't have the expertise to do that.
Okay, but we, we still will have the glass negatives reserved somewhere.
Absolutely. I take them to them, they do their thing, and I bring them back.
Okay.
So they never leave my sight.
Okay.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or anything you'd like to know that maybe I didn't cover. Is it gonna be a hardball or something?
No, hard. Pretty good.
Any, anything I can answer for you?
Amazing what you guys, it's amazing what you're doing.
Did, did the Sampler Fest bring in a lot of people?
Um, we, we tried to ask everybody. We got, we probably got maybe twenty people from the Sampler, you know, 'cause that, that last day that it rained on Sunday, a lot, several of them came down there 'cause it was open. I'll tell you where we've gotten the most people from lately is, you probably saw that Wichita Eagle, the top ten off the beaten museums. I have had more people come in and tell me that they're here for that. So, and, you know, we've been trying to get on that list for five years, so that was really neat that we found that.
Do you do stuff with the Kansas Sampler? I mean, with that organization? Do you use them at all to market yourself?
Yeah, and, and I'm a member of that rural-
Yeah, yeah.
Because we have the agritourism site, which is the farm.
Right, right.
So, yeah, we, we do a lot of things back and forth. Did I, you know, I sort of was just a participant in the Sampler itself.
Right.
But, yeah, we, we work with them on the agritourism part and like the ERV, you know, when it came through and that kinda thing.
Right, okay. Yeah, they're a great asset for the state, to get just our local tourists, I mean, local, local people to go do things.
Well, and Marcy is very smart when it comes to rural, rural sites, so. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is the library.
And I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, so shame on me, the librarian, for not having some pretty thing to show you, but I do believe you do have the information I sent the last time. I think we were supposed to have the budget meeting. Lucky for me, I brought copies.
Lucky for you. Impressive.
You may, you may approach.
What, what would you do if I said no?
Just like Judge Judy.
So, are you Judge Judy, then? You said it's like Judge Judy?
All right, well, um, our Board of Trustees met on June thirteenth, uh, twenty sixteen, and we did approve our budget request for the year twenty seventeen. And we are requesting that we receive our entire amount of six mils, as allowed by our current charter ordinance, in addition to our portion of other taxes such as LAVTR and other motor vehicle taxes. Uh, as you can see, kind of down, I know you're kind of just probably glancing through this right now. Um, some of our, uh, budget items, we, I just kind of figured for an increase in some areas. Um, some of that is just because the cost of supplies, the cost of, um, services have increased. Um, like, for example, library insur- insurance always goes up, right? Health insurance, library insurance is always increasing. Um, public relations, um, professional services, uh, we're having to pay for our auditor fee. Um, that was new this year, which was three thousand dollars. And that actually, when I got the bill, it was thirty-five hundred, surprise. So, um, as with everything, it's just increasing. Um, and facility maintenance, I did put an increase in that. But on the other page, you can kind of see, um, just for estimation purposes, I just kind of kept with the same amount that we were, were approved for, for twenty sixteen this year, which was three fifty-eight, um, and that's just kind of what I went with with twenty seventeen. Some of the increases that, uh, you might see in some of the income comes from an average that we received from donations, which would be our contributions and memorials, fines and fees. Um, SICLs, which is the South Central Kansas Library System, it's the regional library system that we're a part of. Uh, we actually got an increase in funding from them this year, uh, which accounts for the increase that I'm projecting for next year. Uh, we rarely get less than what we've received from the previous year. Uh, state aid, we didn't get as much money from the state last year. And this year, we're going to get more money, so, um, yay for us.
Hasn't been cut yet.
They, they listen to librarians, I guess, because they're giving us our money. So, um, we are getting, uh, what we have received average-wise, um, in the past for libraries, which is about four, five thousand dollars. It's a lot. I'm kidding. Um, and then, of course, increases in our operating interest. Anyway, I averaged some of that out, which kind of accounts for some of the increase in our income.
Put your CIP fund, just sit in that right now, 'cause I know you guys' roof is horrible shape, and your windows are not the greatest either.
Yeah, no, the windows are, um, bad. I actually attended a historical trust fund workshop a few weeks ago. And, um, unless your windows are completely rotted and completely just-
They don't help that much.
No, you have to, you can't get a complete replacement, you can only repair. Um, so, that's unfortunate, but, um, yeah, our roof is pretty bad in bad condition. But I think the last time I had looked, we got a new roof in two thousand two, and it had a ten-year warranty. So, it's lasted this long, but it is, I mean, it is leaking. And at this point, we've, we've made enough repairs to the roof that-
I heard your office has been underwater or-
My office was leaking, and that was new. I was working on my computer and I heard a drip, 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 and I'm like, oh, please, not my office. But, um, yeah, right for now, for a long time, it's just been the men's upstairs restroom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we actually have a bubble in the ceiling from all the water that's kind of leaked through up there. Um, and then we, in our little back, we call it the back porch, it's a little reading area, um, on the north side of the building, and it leaks all the time, too, so. Fun stuff with building a facility, it's always something going on.
Hmm.
Um. Okay, there's also, if I could just look through some of the stuff that we've done for the last few years, um, as far as building repairs and everything like that. And then, I did do, I, I used to give the board members, um, just this spreadsheet, um, from Excel of our statistics, and it was really boring and, and no one really cares to read about that. So, I like, I'm a visual person, so I like to use little charts and everything that I've, um, made up. These charts are, uh, based on stat, on data that we've gotten from May of twenty fifteen to May of this year. Uh, so some of these numbers look different now that I've gotten the data through June. Some of those numbers have increased, um, which is nice, but, um... And sometimes it looks, you know, sometimes we have a decrease, like, daily average of patrons per month in the library. Looks like we've seen a huge decrease. And, uh, I know that in twenty fourteen, our, we have a little machine at the front door that counts, you know, the number of people that walk in the door, a little, uh, counter. And, um, it broke, so we had to replace it. Sometimes things like that, it's just user error, machine error, whatever it might be. Or, um, sometimes it's, uh, we've had turnover amongst staff and differences in the way that data's collected. Um, like, for example, we, quite a few years ago, um, no one, the librarians didn't count statistics on, um, students that they saw when they went to outreach. So, if they went to a school and did a storytime, or if they, um, in May, when we do our, um, when we try to promote our summer reading program, and we see almost every student in the, um, district, they didn't count that in the statistics. So, when we had a new children's librarian who thought, no, I'm, this is, I'm getting paid to do this, and this is outreach and this is contact with kids, we, we need to count this in our, in our data. So, um, it looked like there was a huge increase, and that's why. So, sometimes it might be things like that, why the numbers look a little different.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
On the children's programming, and I know the answer already, but two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, you guys, very, very active and high in attendance for those programs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, given the reason why it decreased, has there been any thoughts or ideas given to how to try to bring those numbers back up as far as from a facility perspective?
Offering multiple, um, you know, if we have a program, just offering multiple chances to, for s- for people to come in and ta- do that program, so just-
Yeah, just for the commissioner's, um, knowledge, the reason why it dropped significantly in those two years is just they were over capacity. I mean, they, they were definitely, uh, the fire marshal came in, still love him, man. Um, they were just over capacity in that, in that building, just way too many kids. It just wasn't safe, so we had to reduce the numbers, unfortunately.
Yeah. And it's unfortunate, because we really can pack in the, the numbers if we wanted to, but it's not, uh, it's not safe, for one, but it also, it's just, um, it's not comfortable in there, not just for space-wise, but because, like, the, the largest space we have in our, in our, um, for the children's library is that, we call it the tree room, it has all those trees. And because of those trees, and you can't get rid of the trees, because some of them are beans that they've just been turned into trees, um, you, you can't get a good, you know, view, no matter which position you're standing at in the room, you're not going to, you know, always get the greatest advantage of-
So, you get a hundred and fifty kids down there, you can't move anywhere, it's, it's, it's too crowded, it's just-
And so, and that limits us in our programming, too, because we can't always get, we can't always do the things we want to do because of the space restrictions, so. But if we offer multiple, um, you know, if we have a program and we offer multiple times that that program's, um, given, then that, that's pretty much the only way that we have of increasing or getting back up to those numbers.
How soon were you here on your grant for your digitization of your Michael Field?
I was told the end of the summer, but I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I'll win some.
Did you, is that the Wilkins trial?
Through the VJ Wilkins.
Oh, September. December.
I don't know if that means when it stops getting hot, or if it's just, I don't know. But usually, they're, they don't take very long. I think that once they meet, um, I don't think that's very-
They're meeting here in two weeks.
Pretty soon, yeah.
Two weeks?
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick, what's, what's the rules on, uh, our library is, is taxed on the count, or the school district?
No, it is not, it's a city only.
Okay.
So, it's in the city jurisdiction.
Can we reach out to, like, Parker Field and, and Sticker Mill Levy, I mean, if they want to?
Well, you can ask them to participate, um, but you cannot force them to participate by any means.
It would take an act of Congress, literally, to increase the library dis- taxing district. If you wanted to make it like a library district, like the, the size of the school district.
But they could voluntarily have a Mill Levy set aside for a joint library, but, um, you cannot force them by any means.
Right, right.
You could deny services to them. You definitely could, but...
It's not good, Peter.
That's not good.
No, wouldn't want to do that. Okay, let's move, okay, we have, uh, Ken Herter, you want to come up and?
Oh, he's going to be on the old business.
Are you old business?
Yeah, 'cause he was talking about traffic study.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't look that old, real close, all right.
It's only a couple more minutes.
Yeah. Okay, we have, uh, no awards proclamations, and let's move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, uh, uh, consists of the minutes of the July fifth meeting and then an appointment to the City Beautification Board. Now, I move we approve the, the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by Commissioner Yukovich to approve the consent agenda as printed. Any more discussion? On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Old business. The, the agreement for the traffic study?
Um, at the last commission meeting, um, we had not, um, reached out or gotten a commitment from anyone to give us a proposal as of yet. Uh, we did receive one on Friday from Trans Systems, we visited with them briefly. And, uh, Eric was out of the office on Friday, so that's why it wasn't attached to the agenda. Uh, just wanted to bring it on for today to take a look. Uh, they're recommending the traffic study and they've taken a look at that corridor, uh, in the, uh, lump sum of nine thousand five hundred dollars.
That's not too bad, that's kind of close to what Eric had said it might be.
What type, type period is this going to be from?
Eric. I think eight weeks is, uh, their schedule from start to finish. Um, from, yeah, it says eight, eight weeks following completion of field work, so...
Is this only for First Street?
Yes. Uh, basically from Birch to Kansas Avenue and First.
Well, they'll do, they'll do Kansas, right?
Yeah, they'll do that intersection, how, how it interacts with First Street.
Yeah.
Does that take a look at that?
What do we think this is going to show us, Eric?
I think it's going to give us some accurate traffic counts and peak, peak flow times. Uh, some of the things that, you know, they have in their scope of services is basically items one through seven. Some of it, um, it is fairly simple. Number one is inventory, the, basically the signage, site characteristics along that area. Make sure we're compliant with the latest edition of the MUTCD. Um, two is just collect daily counts on Summit, um, between Kansas and Birch, and also on First Street, between Kansas and Birch. Item three, um, they're going to collect volume counts at the intersections, and they list out all the intersections, basically from Birch to Kansas. Um, and then, number four is, which I think we could probably eliminate, this is review recent crash experience on the First Street Study segment. We researched that ourselves, and we haven't had any in that area. Uh, however, there may be some on Summit that they, they look at. And then, five, they were going to grow volumes to the future year. Uh, they specify later that they're going to use just some simple development, like commercial development and standard trip generation as that develops along that corridor. Um, and then, item six, they're going to develop some recommendations. And seven, prepare a memo summarizing their findings, like what do we do to improve? It did exclude any cost estimates. We try to, try to keep this as simple as we could, but yet beneficial for having a plan, um, as growth occurs in the corridor. Some improvements that we can make to First Street. So, we hope at the end of the day, um, and we've talked a little bit about some things that could be some short-term improvements. Uh, one of the things that popped up was trying to eliminate, um, on-street parking on the west side of the road, because there's an alley behind there. Um, and if we could eliminate parking on that west side, it could potentially free up some room and space for people. Um, but they were, just a quick glance, they went and looked at the site. Um, they had the same thing that, that we had talked about, that any type of northbound one-way would, um, really complicate things at the intersection of Kansas and First. So, just at First plant, they thought that was going to be a big no-no. Um, it was just kind of creating more of a mess than they already had there, so. So, they're looking at other, other things as far as potentially a southbound, potentially eliminate some on-street parking. And all that will come out with, with a simple study, I guess.
Does the traffic count differentiate between trucks and cars, you know, semis and cars?
Some of the new counters do. Uh, they time between the axles, um, but that's a good question. I'd have to find out whether their particular counters would identify the type of vehicle. A lot of times, they, they do multi-axle loads, because they go over the counter so quick that they count it as a trailer.
Okay. That would, I think that would be kind of, kind of nice to know what's going on that, with the truck traffic from the street, First Street.
And see, KDOT had a count, um, in twenty fifteen, just shy of seventeen thousand vehicles a day, but that was both northbound and southbound.
On Summit?
On Summit, right there at Kansas.
But they just count? They don't count, they don't separate trucks with semis from, from cars?
Correct, it's just vehicles per day.
Okay.
Again, um, because we, we had a packed agenda, and it was fairly short notice, uh, we elected not to have them here, but they offered to come down to the first meeting in August, Trans Systems, so you would have an opportunity to meet with them, uh, address any questions you may have on, on this letter, uh, scope, anything like that, they offered to come down, uh, next meeting as well.
Now, that, that's included in the, in the fee?
That's solicitation.
Will we, we'll be paying extra expenses for them to come in elsewhere?
Later, we would, um, but no, it would just be to describe what their letter agreement states. Um, this is basically a draft, so if there was anything that we wanted to study in addition or deduct from, now's the opportunity to get comments back to them. They've just offered to come down and answer any questions the commission may have.
Do we need to get back to them? Oh, here, about a hundred and twenty days, I said now.
Yeah.
So, we can go over this and talk more about it, can we?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd kind of like to do that, since we just got it about the rest of it.
Yeah, we just said-
I agree.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll post, we'll look at this and get back in the next meeting. Mr. Herter, do you have anything to say?
I may answer pretty much everything.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, new business.
Item one, consider a resolution setting a public meeting of the governing body to discuss a two thousand seventeen budget at a date, time, and place to be determined.
Would actually like to meet, uh, next, uh, Tuesday evening, five-thirty, if we could.
Twenty-sixth?
Yes, sir.
You are correct. You are correct.
Uh, I have nothing on my calendar.
I'll be late.
What time do you, what time can you be?
What time, time can you make it?
Um, about six.
Let me start at six.
Set for six. Set for six.
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Karen?
Yeah, I have an appointment, but I, it should be later in the afternoon.
Okay.
And, that's okay with Jay?
Far as we know, it's okay with Jay.
Yeah, he'll be back.
Okay.
I, I know he'll be back, I didn't know if he had any special date, okay.
A Friday noon doesn't work anymore?
Um...
When we used to do stuff like this.
Do it.
Yeah, um...
Which?
Well, yeah. Probably be here this Friday though.
Okay. Yeah, well, that actually, I mean, that'll work for me, that.
Twenty-sixth, six?
Twenty-sixth at six.
In the commission chambers, correct? Or do we wanna just do in my office?
Oh, we have more room in here, don't we?
Hmm, a lot overhead though. Well, I'll get over it here. We can do it in here, that's fine.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, it don't matter to me.
Easiest for you.
Yeah, we'll do it in here.
Okay.
I move we approve a ru- resolution setting a public meeting of the twenty-sixth of, uh, July at six P M. in the, in the commission chambers.
I'll second that. It's been moved by Commissioner Tweedy and seconded by myself to approve setting a public meeting for August twenty-sixth at six P M. in City Manager? Commission Chambers, Commission Chambers, I'm sorry, I was writing, the Commission Chambers. Any other comments?
Uh, I, I think we probably oughta add in the two thousand seventeen budget.
Yeah, two thousand seventeen budget, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't put that in there, it's my fault.
All in favor? Let's see, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Meeting's set. Uh...
The bu- the budget looks good, especially considering what I'm gonna be going, going over with later, so.
A little bit later, okay.
This is the next year's budget.
If next year's budget looks good.
Okay. Okay. Item number two, new business.
Consider first reading of amendments modifying Article twenty-five of the zoning regulations to provide the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission and amending municipal code so...
Mayor and Commissioner, at the last meeting, um, July fifth, you'd requested, or we kinda went over this motion to, to come up with a way to combine these two boards together. Consensus was, was pretty good, but you'd asked to take it back to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did hear, um, from Mr. Lawson, he handled the meeting for me, uh, last Tuesday on the twelfth. Uh, went over any of the remaining changes that, that staff had made since then. Um, City Attorney has since drafted an ordinance for you, uh, by the way, they approved the changes. City Attorney's still drafted an ordinance for you, and that is before you tonight, I believe, for a first reading. I'm open to any further questions.
Andrew, there was a couple of questions I asked you that you said you'd probably pass on to Josh, was it?
Oh, they did have a question about the frequency of meetings, like, uh, in the ordinance, it says something to the effect of, uh, having it monthly.
Right.
Um, statute doesn't actually say that it, it, we just need, uh, regular meetings. Obviously, monthly's good, but there's nothing that requires this.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Matthews has something.
I had, forgot about him last news, damn. Come up and tell us your name and where you live, please.
My name's Bob Matthews, live at nine hundred North D., previous city commissioner, previous Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, sorry to be so late coming in when you're trying to pass an ordinance, but I think this thing is totally wet. You know, in reading the ordinance as was presented to me earlier this evening, it's saying that the Planning Commission can come in and say this is it. Okay, that's fine, can't build within fifty feet of my property line. So I need to build within twenty-five feet. I'm coming back to the exact same commission that just told me I couldn't do that. Most of the time in a court of law, you're gonna rescue yourself because you got a conflict of interest. I don't see where we have a problem in finding people to serve on these boards. In fact, Mr. Mayor, I told you at a tax meeting at the Northwest Community Center, I would be happy to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals if you needed someone. If you needed someone, I was never asked. I just don't think you can, as a planning commission, can make a rule and turn around and override yourself on the same rule you just made. It, it just doesn't meet logic, probably doesn't meet legal requirements. I'm sure Tamara has advised you, it probably does, but you see it all the time. The commissioners say that if something happened at the hospital, he would rescue himself because of the bonds. Same thing in the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. You just can't have two boards out of one board to override itself. I'd still be happy, Mr. Mayor, to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. I know it's late in the game, but I think you ought to take a hard look at this thing and not jump into it and say, we're gonna have one board, but it's gonna really be two boards. It just is not logical. And I hope you don't pass it tonight, would give the citizens a better shot at coming back, because, Mr. Mayor, if you need somebody, I can find you three or four people that will serve on that Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, we've had, uh, I've got, you told me that, I, I apologize. And, uh, we've been trying to get people to, uh, put their names in and we just don't get them. You have some names for us to fill both of these boards.
You need five on the Board of Zoning Appeals?
And seven on, uh...
You give me a, you give me two weeks and I'll get you a Board of Zoning Appeals.
Give them the other list, too. We've got more boards.
I didn't, I didn't say anything else, man. I will fill your Board of Zoning Appeals within two weeks.
Well, the problem, I think the problem we've had is members showing up when they need to.
I will say that if I get to pick them and you approve them, they will show up.
You guarantee us?
I wouldn't make them there. I can't guarantee, you know, a hundred percent every meeting, but I will guarantee you, you don't have more than a form.
Well, I mean... Well, true.
I...
Yeah.
Aye, that's a good point, though, about one board is meant to be the check and the balance of the other board, so putting them together.
Right, you can't, it, it's not gonna work. That would be like, you pass an ordinance today and then I come back tomorrow and ask you, well, won't you set this little portion of this ordinance aside? The same board? No, I just, yesterday we just told you we weren't gonna do that, so why should I do it today? You know, and, and you've got a problem with rescuing yourself because you got a conflict of interest in what's going on. But if, if you'd like that, Mr. Mayor, give me a call. You can call me on my cell phone number, it's two-two-two-one-five-five-five.
The whole world has it now.
Karen will tell you not to call two-two-one-five-five-five-five, or you're getting wind through the police department, right, Karen?
Yeah.
Two-two-two-one-five-one-five, is your number.
Two-two-two-one-five-five-five.
And this is on YouTube, by the way.
Yeah, it's on YouTube now.
Yeah.
You'll be getting lots of calls.
Alright.
Ministers?
I, I think we should get him to change.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I, I don't think, we weren't gonna pass this tonight anyway, there's, there'll be a second reading, for sure.
You...
Thank you for your...
You come back, their next Mitch meeting with names to fill all those positions?
Or before.
Or before? Preferably before.
I can't come back at the first meeting of the month because I chair the City County Health Board and that's exactly the same night we meet, so I can't give that board up, but give me two weeks and you want me to report to...
Andrew. Yeah.
Give, give him, give him the names of every one of them with the, filled out, like, we do, you know, the form they fill out?
Oh, now, you're asking a lot. I just said I'd give you names.
Um, we need a little bit more than just names.
Well, we get the names. I think Andrew can probably give them, we give them a call.
They'd have to come in, though.
They'd have to come in and, yeah. That's what I'm...
We can, we can email the forms.
Yeah, email, let him come in.
I'll pick up the sheets from Andrew and get them filled out. Have you got any present members of the Planning Board?
Uh, we do.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the list.
That would like to stay on the board?
Well, I think they all were, weren't they?
Yeah, they all do, yeah.
Yeah, none was gonna lose his seat.
There's just, there's two vacancies on each board.
Two vacancies on the Planning Board?
Yeah.
Two vacancies on planning and two on zoning.
Okay. You retain the three that's on the zoning board then? They will stay?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not up for...
Okay, so all I need's two?
They're not up for being moved off.
Need four.
Well, two on each, so...
I didn't, I didn't say that I would do the Planning Commission.
He's, he's at zoning.
I said I would do the...
Zoning.
Zoning Board, the five members on the zoning board.
That'd be easy.
You weren't gonna do commi- Planning Commission?
Sir?
Zoning's easy.
No, I said I'd get you the five.
For zoning.
Board of Zoning.
Well, we only need two, so, and we need...
All I gotta come up is two, and if I volunteer, all I gotta do is come up with one. I'll have him by the end of morning.
So we, we could, if you give us five, we could take some of those and paint, put them on the Planning Commission.
See, there you go.
We'll use them all.
We're painting you into it.
He, Mr. Matthews said he's volunteering, he, so, Plan Commission.
I volunteered to be on the Board of Zoning Bill.
Board of Zoning now, okay.
No, I'm sorry, uh...
Planning?
No, Board of Zoning.
No.
Board of Zoning, okay. Let's get this right.
Don't even...
Okay, Board of Zoning Bill.
Alright.
No, I can probably have you the second one by tomorrow afternoon.
Still leaves us a couple.
Thank you for your consideration.
Too short, okay? Alright, thank you. Well, any other comments from the commissioners?
Uh, Josh, you've researched this with other cities. Have, have they had major problems?
Eric, from what I understand, no, there hasn't been any large problems. There was one city I did talk to that wasn't very happy with their relationship of them being combined. But a lot of the cities were, were okay with it. They didn't have any, they didn't express any concerns.
I think it's a valid concern and makes me wonder.
I, I don't completely dismiss Mr. Matthews' comments.
Yeah, that's, I mean, maybe...
Uh, the one key thing to remember, though, is the Planning Commission doesn't make day-to-day decisions. So a lot of what the Board of Zoning Appeals does is actually, um, either accept appeals or variance for my decisions. So, and I'm obviously not on the Planning Commission, so, um, I wouldn't have a conflict like they would.
Yeah.
That isn't to say there, there can at least appear to be a conflict of interest. I won't deny that.
Thanks.
Well...
Walk, walk us through a typical, somebody wants to come in and put up a, a building on their property. What do they do? They come to Planning Commission first, correct?
No, they would not have to come to the Planning Commission first. If, if what they're doing meets the regulations, no setbacks, size of building, that sort of thing.
Okay. Okay. It never comes to Planning Commission?
If, it doesn't have to come to the Planning Commission at all.
If, if they wanna, if they wanna vary from the rules?
If they wanna vary from the rules, then they would go currently before the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, so the Planning Commission wouldn't really interfere, I mean, the members of the Planning Commission really wouldn't be, um...
When they're serving as the Planning Commission? No, they would not hear those.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, they wouldn't have had prior decisions made on, on that property, other than at what, when we do comprehensive plan stuff?
Yeah, and there's, the Board of Zoning Appeals wouldn't have anything to do with their current plan.
Right.
So there, there is some separation between what those two boards do. They don't do, they don't serve exactly the same purpose.
Okay. Well, to give Mr. Matthews an opportunity, uh, I move that we table ordinance until a second reading on August second. And that is the ordinance modifying the Article twenty-five, the zoning regulations. Any other comments? Roll call vote?
Do we need one?
Do we need one?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
Not, not the table, it's...
Alright. We're not doing anything. You know, if we need to do that, we'd, so, okay. Next.
Now, you, you made the motion, though.
Oh, I do.
Change it to suggestion.
So we need, we need, we need to have a voice vote, yeah.
Vote. Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Okay. We're down to City Manager updates.
I'm gonna have Chief give you a brief, uh, overview on the crime statistics and crime report.
Mayor, Mr.?
I'll just give...
I won't take much of your time, uh, just wanted to give you a brief update. If you recall when I gave the annual report, I did not have the, uh, state numbers. So we knew that our numbers had gone down across the board and were looking pretty good, but we didn't know how we compared with others. Uh, I wanna direct your attention to two of those numbers, uh, that are pretty significant. Uh, across the state, the numbers for most people went up, so that made our numbers all look much better. Uh, if you look at the overall crime index, uh, we dropped from forty-four point three to thirty-eight point two. Uh, interestingly enough, Winfield had an increase, uh, along with the state, and we have the same crime index as Winfield, Kansas at this point. Uh, the state average is thirty-six point five, so we're almost at the state average for our overall crime index. Uh, the next one that I wanted to point out was the, uh, property crime index. As you know, uh, we spent a great deal of time trying to address property crimes, 'cause that was a number that was, uh, too high in our city. Uh, we had significant, uh, changes in our property crime index, and, uh, as you can see, we now have a lower property crime index than Winfield, Kansas, and we are at the state average. Uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, our tactics are working and we can continue this, uh, trend, and we will lower those numbers across the board and continue to, uh, get below the state average, making our crime rates much better.
Sweet, uh, very good. Kinda explain to us the diff- why Cali County's so low? Is it because of its large area?
Uh, these are, you'll see that across the state when you look at the, uh, the KBI's document. County agencies are typically much lower because of the, uh, the, uh, number of people are spread out. So while the county may have about the same number of people as both, uh, Winfield and us, uh, they're spread out, and so you don't have the same kind of crime index, crime ages. When you put people together, you have more crime.
Thank you. A lot of people probably don't realize that.
You don't have crimes reported.
They don't have crimes reported.
And that's also something true.
Chris, the last one?
We do have, uh, full disclosure, our, uh, our violent crime index, while it did drop, and, uh, across the state, the violent crime indexes did go up. Uh, we're getting closer, but we still have a high violent crime index. Uh, while we had less murders, rapes, and robberies than our, uh, neighbor to the north, we still have a higher crime index, uh, for violent crimes. But that's based on aggravated assaults and aggravated battery, so, uh, we're still, we're moving in the right direction and it's still going down.
Yes, we are.
Last couple of weeks changed that a bit.
Well, probably not. It'll, it'll take, it'll take another couple of years, I think, for that to come down.
Okay. Thanks for your service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We stand behind you.
I have one, one more thing there, Chief, before you leave. PETA sent them a letter. For those that don't know what PETA is, it's People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. Um, they sent a letter to Chief and says, Dear Chief, award on behalf of People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals and our more than five million members and supporters worldwide, many of whom live in Kansas, I'm pleased to let you know that the, I'm sure she thinks it's Arkansas City. Our Kansas City Police Department received a compassionate Police Department Award for rescuing a dog who was found hanging by a leash outside a vehicle window. We'd like to extend a special thank you to Sergeant Jason Leglider and Officer Wade Hammond for their quick actions to save this dog from what would've, or what could've been a very tragic death. We hope your team's efforts will inspire others to come to the aid of animals in need. In recognition of this a- action, they're sending the Ark City Police Department a framed certificate and delicious vegan cookies. Thank you for your compassion, very truly yours. Um, Ingrid Newkirk, President of, uh, PETA.
Pork Ranch.
Uh, congratulations.
How many hits did you end up getting on that, uh, Facebook post?
Congratulations.
Uh, today it was over a hundred and seventy thousand.
Hundred and seventy thousand hits on our Facebook post. I know I had, uh, calls, well, individuals that... Hundred and seventy thousand hits on our Facebook post. I know I had, uh, calls, well, individuals that had seen the broadcast in Alaska, and it was on Washington Times.
It's on Bark Box.
Yes, Bark Buck, wherever that is, Bark Box. Um, it was on a lot of different websites, I mean, it was all over.
We had Taiwan, Scotland. Uh, we actually received a phone call from Scotland and from, uh, upstate New York, calling and telling us, "Good job," so. We had quite a bit of exposure on that.
It's pretty amazing. It really is.
And also, you know, the fire department had a rescue on Friday. I don't know if y'all seen that or not.
Dog, yeah, yeah.
Uh.
Oh, yeah.
The dog went into the river, and the daughter went after the, to try to save the dog, and then the mother went after the daughter 'cause the mother, because the do- the daughter was getting tired, and, uh, the, all three of them ended up being saved, the dog and, and the mother and daughter, and so, uh, we were very fortunate, 'cause it could've went, could've went sour really quick.
Yeah. About five, four minutes ago then.
What it did bring to our attention is the need for some sort of better access on the Ark River. We have got to figure out a better way to get boats launched into that river. Uh, we have a launch on the Walnut, which is in fairly good condition.
It's just on the.
But when it comes to the Ark River, there's, you know, we had that one on Chestnut, but, uh, it, it, that's, it needs a lot of work if you're going to do any sort of, um, rescue type operations, or have a reliable boat ramp, uh, that could be utilized in, in a time of need. 'Cause there's just nothing on the Ark River. And if it was a swift water rescue, we'd end up having to try to set off in Udall or somewhere north, or, um, Oxford, just to.
Oxford.
Oxford's the closest boat ramp, to be honest, and that's not a privately owned boat ramp. And so, that would make it very difficult, 'cause you can't launch from the Walnut to get up the Ark River, just no way. We don't, we don't have the boat power, you know, to do that. Um, so it's something we have definitely gotta be looking into, and, uh, we've been working with some groups to try to find funding, um, for that purpose, but it's, it's, it's just every time something happens, it just, it worries the heck out of me that one of these times, we're just not gonna be able to, to get to them, so.
Is that, is that Chestnut, uh, location totally non-work- workable?
I wouldn't say totally non-workable. It means a lot, you're, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief.
It looks like a mud pit to me.
It's a mud pit, is what it is.
Yeah.
It, 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 we, we can't get access out there. It just needs some good maintenance in there, maybe a little more concrete, and get a better, or at least, uh, some rock to shore up where we launch, 'cause we, once you get the boat in so far, it'll drop into some holes and stuff, so it could use some repair. But that's all we have, other than going up to Oxford, so.
Is there, is there anything on the other side of the river that, uh, I, I know the, uh, nature center puts kayaks in the water over there?
Yeah, the big deal is getting access with our trailer and boat, so, and then you're talking a pretty good amount of time, uh, to travel there.
Yeah, that's long distance, yeah.
Well, if you've got somebody that's stuck in fast water rescue, I mean, you have to be able to launch as soon as you get close to the scene.
Yeah.
And preferably as close as possible where, where your, um, your victims are located. Fortunately, on this one, um, it wasn't very far away from the Chestnut launch, so we did have some tough, uh, issues powering the boat because we had to go upstream, so that took a little bit of time, and it taxed the, the motor quite a bit, but I said it, it, uh, went very well and, uh, saved two people and a dog, so, which.
To be honest, we need to figure out a way to maybe come in some sort of agreement with an air boater.
Yeah.
Or someone who has s- some serious horsepower, because our little boats, they're, they're not designed for swift water. We'd have, we'd actually end up with probably more problems if we tried to do it.
But, but the air boaters don't like to get in swift water either, because of all the logs and stuff right now.
Yeah, you always worry about that.
No. Right.
You, you always worry about, uh, the types of boats we have, because they're really not for high water and, uh, the speed that's going down. Um, the movement of water when you have floods, um, are really not made for that.
Right.
Need to look at, uh, like I said, an airboat or a Zodiac type boat, inflatable. And the nice thing about the Zodiac boats is a lot of those are fairly lightweight, so you can actually have people carry it and launch it pretty much anywhere, so. I know that's what Wichita uses.
What, which, is that what they use?
Yeah.
They don't have.
They've got several boats, uh, they do have one that they use on the lakes for, and, and to work divers off of. Uh, most time in the Ark Kansas River, uh, they're utilizing the Zodiac, and they've also got this little rescue, uh, uh, it's kinda like a banana boat, rescue boat, that's not powered, but they can, uh, from the bank, they can utilize ropes and move that around to get in different locations, and I think that's, yeah, Hutchinson had a couple of rescues with the high water, and that's what they utilize also, so.
Do we have, currently have one of those boats?
No, no, we just got a flat bottom and a V bottom.
Well, I mean, the, the yellow thing.
Banana boat?
The banana.
The banana boat, no, uh, no.
What, have you looked for any locations along the Ark River?
We did a little bit, uh, there was talk, uh, uh, south of, uh,
Madison Bridge.
Madison Bridge at one time, and that was.
Old Sunflower Park down there.
Yeah, KDOT put the stop to that.
KDOT did put the stop. I mean, they wouldn't stop us from emergency access. The problem is, if you build a boat ramp, you don't want it to be a once every ten, fifteen year type boat ramp. You would like to get some recreational use out of it.
Exactly, so.
And the only way you could actually use that, you'd actually have to build some sort of in, core approved roadway up and over the levee to get down in there because KDOT, like I said, will not allow us to have access that close to the levee.
But if the water, if, if the water's up, that's all gonna be underwater, right?
We would have to be up pretty significantly for that to be underwater, 'cause we were at the highest level, just recently, we're at the highest level that the Ark River had been in since two thousand and seven, when we had the big flood, and, uh, it still wasn't out the banks in that Sunflower Park area.
Okay, okay.
It was a little farther to the, to the south, but not in that Sunflower Park.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, how's your search for the new candidates going?
Uh, we have, uh, we have three in background investigation right now, so it'll take a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, moving on.
Project updates?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. It's gonna, this, this is gonna take a little bit of time to go through this, and I'm sure you have a lot of questions. I'm gonna start off with the, uh, South Central Kansas loan summary, medical center loan summaries sheet. Um, there's two sheets, well, first line says special assessments as of seven fifteen of sixteen. If you go to the second or third page, actually, in that packet, uh, you'll see excerpt from Resolution twenty thirteen twelve twenty six sixty-four. That is the special, a portion of the special assessment payback, uh, list. Um, the amount that, uh, we're, we're owed basically per month from the hospital for the improvements out there, seventeen thousand nine hundred thirty-four dollars a month. Uh, they stopped paying that back in, um, March of two thousand and fifteen. And so, to date, that through seven fifteen sixteen, they actually owe us three hundred and four, three hundred and five thousand dollars, just towards special assessments. So, that's money we've had to come up with through mill levy to offset that, because that's actually in the bond and interest, um, fund, uh, in, in our budget, so. Uh, that's a significant portion. So, that's cash, so we're outlaying, that could be used on other bond project, bond.
If there, if, if there was something else constructed out there, like a restaurant or something, would that?
Only if that property was sold, then you would probably give that individual the, uh, um, you would give them the special assessments to pay. But as of right now, the hospital's responsible for the property that's owned by the hospital, which is that entire area minus the hotel.
Okay. Okay.
But you would break that off, and that would reduce.
Okay.
Um, then, uh, you see that we loaned them in August two thousand and fifteen, three hundred thousand dollars. They, uh, did pay us back, uh, three months worth of that at twenty-five thousand dollars piece, so seventy-five thousand. Uh, we loaned them, um, two hundred and seventy-five thousand more in March of this year, and we just got done paying for quorum, first payment of quorum, which is seventy-five thousand for this year. Uh, so, so far, between those two amounts, we've paid out eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the hospital. Um, we still have, uh, for the remainder of this year, a hundred thousand dollars to quorum. Uh, we have the principal and interest payment, which is one point one six five million, which is due actually in August. We have to certify the funds to the state of Kansas the first week in August, I believe, rough, first, second weekend.
Around the tenth.
Around tenth of August. So, that means we have to have money in the bank set aside for that bond payment. Um, and as, as, uh, Virgil told you, they'll be able to come up with a hundred thousand on top of that four hundred and five thousand, which is already there from sales tax. That would leave the city having to come up with an additional seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for that bond payment in August.
Hmm, okay.
So, you may wonder, how in the heck are we gonna come up with that much money, and how are we, how in the heck have we been able to pay out that eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Well, I'm gonna show you, and it's in this budget worksheet page. Back in February of this year, uh, all of us department heads had a meeting. We basically got together and said, you know what? We've got to cut the budget, because we highly doubt the hospital's gonna come up with any money to pay their bond payments at all this year. And so, we got together, and I said, I want your cuts. I want your cuts to show me what we would do this year if the sales tax passes, and also want you to show me what you would do if the sales tax doesn't pass. And unfortunately for us, or fortunately for us, we didn't have to go down the route where the sales tax didn't pass, because it would've been, it would've been beyond ugly. Um, but our department heads, our staff, our employees know how important it is to do their part, and we've had some, uh, um, museum board did their part. I don't think they're handing more. Museum board agreed to reduce their, um, budget allowance from a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, a hundred and ten thousand this year. Um, we've also, uh, were in talks early, early on in the year with the chamber of reducing their amount too, so. So, those, outside of those, um, if you go to page, it's, looks like this in here. These are actually the fire and EMS cuts, which serve as the greatest portion of what we've been able to reduce so far. And I'm gonna go through some of the, the bigger items here. Um, eliminated, elimination of one position in the fire department, and we have open positions that will be enabled to save money in both salary and benefits from, from those openings. You're talking a tune of a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars there. Uh, billing services, we've reduced our supplies and tools budget, clothing, firefighting chemicals. Fuel, we reduced our fuel budget by sixteen grand, building, repair, and maintenance by eleven thousand. Keep in mind, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar copay on our roof, so we left that in there. If it wouldn't have been the roof, that would've been twenty-five thousand dollars less on that line item, so that would've been a savings of thirty-six thousand. Um, eighty-five thousand dollars, 'cause we were scheduled to get a tanker this year. We were supposed to replace a tanker. Our, our existing tanker's, uh, thirty years old, I believe. Our newest tanker's thirty years old, so we were supposed to do that this year. Um, bay wall renovation, eighteen thousand dollars, um, fire hose, ten thousand. We're supposed to get ten portable radios, a cost of thirty-eight thousand. And then, three thousand in software, so those are things we've cut out of this year's budget, um, from, from the fire department. Police department, um, they're def- they're down, reduction of one position, but they also have four open vacancies. They have three positions right now that are vacant, and they have a PSO officer that's vacant, but they're trying to fill them, just like the fire department is. So, their reduction and side benefits, you know, is a hundred thousand estimated. Trials and lodging, mills lodging, they reduced their, uh, budget by five thousand. Um, uh, feed outside law enforcement agencies, who assists with Arca Lala, that's the only thing we do. We, we buy them a meal for them helping with Arca Lala parade, and it's about thirteen hundred bucks, but we're trying to find every dime we can, unfortunately. Um, advertisement budget to budget, uniform budget, five thousand dollar reduction, five thousand fuel and oil, five thousand supplies, um, six thousand machinery and equipment. Um, there's, there's some things also that aren't reflected in here that we just have to do. We're committed to, um, certification for the fire, or for the police department, and moving forward with the CLEA certification, so. There are some costs that we're still moving forward with, because we've got to stay on track to get that certification. And I think they come in and next year, end of next year, or is it eighteen, first part of eighteen?
Twenty seventeen they're locked, and early twenty eighteen, so actually.
Actual, so we're on track and our target with the budget cuts, and to still meet that deadline as of right now. Um, also, uh, Parks Facilities Department, Tony got rid of all, almost all the summer help, twelve thousand dollars. Uh, Northwest Community Center, twenty-eight thousand dollars for the roof. Uh, we used to spray the streets for weeds, that was ten thousand dollars we took out of there. Um, Cemetery Road, ten thousand dollars, agribusiness roof, ninety-seven thousand was what we had budgeted, we had ninety-two thousand for the elevator, and twenty-five thousand dollars for a new parks truck.
I have a question here on spraying for weeds.
Yes.
So, um, and Josh, you might know the answer, or Mr. Brown, or so if a, if a business owner or homeowner sprays their own sidewalk, is that, is there any regulation of chemicals you can use or anything, or you just go out and use weed out and go spray your?
No, you can, you can, I believe, as long as it's a residential type spray, as long as you're not dumping it down our storm drain, I think you're fine.
That's.
Yeah.
I was, I, I was spraying my alley, and I started thinking.
Oh, thank you.
Uh-oh.
We have a couple more alleys to go.
You did better than I am. I'll just go out and spray it.
Well, I was spraying the alley, and I'm thinking, it's gonna run right into the.
But then, the spraying the streets, that included the parking lots too, so that's why the grass kinda got out to all the parking lots, 'cause we'd much rather spray them early in the year and not have to worry about weeding them, but we actually went through and weeded a lot of them, and, and I said, you know, the heck with it, just spray them, and so we ended up spraying all of them. And so, uh, we did get the parking lot sprayed. But if you come back now to this sheet, the first page of that Ark City budget worksheet, you can see that, um, the debt service, it says three hundred thousand. That was actually our emergency reserve. Um, so we, we basically eliminate our emergency reserve fund. Um, we, city commission's up significantly, because that's the money that we're looking at potentially having to pay out plus additional to, uh, the hospital still, so that's why that's up two hundred and sixty percent. Um, otherwise, um, city manager's budget's down, uh, courts down, legal's down twenty percent. Neighborhood services up is, is up ten point seven four percent, but that's because we've had to pay out a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for demolitions of structures. We've had two dangerous structures, um, very, very large dangerous structures. Had the one on South Summit, and we had the one, um, uh, that's owned by, uh,
uh, on Adams Avenue.
Yeah, and, on Adams Avenue, right across from First Inner Markham, that's owned by them, so, and that's a thirty-seven thousand dollar demolition that, that we haven't, we haven't received any funds from anybody.
Are we gonna get that money back?
Well, we've assessed it on their taxes, so we have, we have not, we've sent them bills and second bills and third bills, and never got any payment whatsoever, so now we put it on their taxes.
Do we, do we actually know who owned the building on South Summit, though?
Yes, we do. David Barton is the individual who owns the building on South Summit, um, and so, we did assess it towards, towards him. Um, finance department's down three percent, um, fire department's down thirteen point eight percent. Law enforcement's down five percent. Parks Facilities is down thirty-five percent. Paris Park Pool's down eight, nine percent. Uh, River View Cemetery is down eight, nine percent. Streets is down six point six percent. Northwest Community Center's down thirty-five percent. Um, Senior Center's down five percent. Um, overall, if you look at city overall, I, I, we're down thirteen point six eight percent. We've cut thirteen percent, almost fourteen percent of our budgeted expenditures, so that way we don't have to raise the mill levy. That way, we don't have to take out a loan. That way, we wouldn't have to ask the citizens of Ark City to pay another dime, you know, outside of what was already committed to, to our budget. Um, and I, I just have to commend all of our department heads, all of our staff, because they're the ones feeling it out there, and they're the ones that made this happen. And, like I said, we've cut one point two million dollars out of budget, which basically is gonna allow us to come up with every last dime that the hospital wasn't able to come up with to pay the debt service. But also have to commend the outside agencies for taking ahead too. And they willingly did, which, which I applaud them for doing that, so. Um, just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, um, we put our mind to it early in February, said we're gonna do it, and we did it. And this doesn't borrowing from utility funds, this isn't borrowing from anywhere, this is just doing what needed to be done.
And how long will it take us to catch back up once we get back?
How fast is the hospital gonna reimburse us for what we paid out? Like I said, you know, we're, we're up, we're gonna be up to one point seven million dollars that the hospital owes us by the end of the year.
Some of these things, like the agribusiness roof.
Right.
That was even only a portion of what would be needed?
Correct, if you were to do it properly, it was only a portion.
Maybe a third.
It, because we had estimates that were a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand to, to do it correctly, yeah.
Is it gonna, will the cost be higher by waiting?
Absolutely.
Everything else has gone up, so.
I know that was a big, that was a big one, we already.
Yeah.
That we put away money for. And on streets, I know there was cuts to the streets department.
Most of that was, um, some, some personnel, as you can see there, and that's a bulk of it.
Okay.
Um, in, in the streets, all of our street projects are in the street improvement fund, so which we try to operate our utilities, our utilities are tried, we try to keep them separate from everything else. We don't want to rob our general fund, which is our general operating expenditures, just be in the city from those utilities, which we try not to. We do have transfers built in, it's five percent, it's just a very minimal overhead type transfer that we do allow into the general fund. But outside of that, in years past, and in this year, we wouldn't have needed any transfers, I mean, that's ultimately been our goal, is to reduce transfers. Al- also, I wanna point something out, w- we haven't dipped, even with this savings, our cash carryover will be just as much as it was this year. So we're not even reducing our cash reserves by doing this. Yeah. Yeah, this is bare bones.
That's what I was wondering, yeah, with streets, I mean, there's some things, if you don't chip seal or crack seal.
Right, but we're not, we're going with, for the streets, we're doing that stuff, we're taking care of our water lines, we're taking care of our sewer lines, taking care of the plant, sewer and water plant, we're taking care of our streets. And we will continue to do that, um, no matter what it takes, cause we, when I first got here, and one of the things that the commission set forth was saying, protect your core services. We're trying to protect police and fire, but I'm telling you, we do want to, another year like this, we're gonna, we're not gonna make it. We just can't do it, one year, but really it's been almost two years, and they'll tell you it's been two years of this. One more year of this, and we're gonna be in some serious trouble. Because we've, we're on a great schedule to replace our equipment, start making improvements, so we can sustain those improvements, cause we had a good plan to replace equipment. So when equipment did become tired, especially in the, um, fire department, we had a good schedule, good rotational schedule.
Uh, for the hospital, we'll have the one cent sales tax that was approved.
Correct.
And then the half cent sales tax for, when does that go off?
April nineteen.
April of twenty nineteen, though, right at the beginning of the year? March?
End of March.
End of March.
Yeah. March thirty.
So and the way, so the one percent plus the half percent is, should cover that bond payment?
Yes, plus some for short term.
But it's only for, so then in.
That's if we don't see a reduction in sales, which we, the sales tax is down a few percent, or like, I think it's down four percent for this year. So if we don't see another reduction, we'll be okay, but large, and I'll throw this out, the largest reason the sales tax is down is because of excise, um, because of just the gas and, 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 um, natural gas and gas, the excise tax, that, and the transportation of that through the city, it caused our taxes to go down a little bit. But also our sales are down as well, general sales. For a half cent, twenty-five for a half cent. But like I said, the twenty seventeen budget, proposed budget numbers are on here for, in general, and so you can kinda see where they were versus adopted twenty sixteen. So we're not talking big increases, I mean, there's some that are decreasing, some that are increasing, but I, I'm telling you, we're gonna be able to do what we said we would be able to do. And we're gonna keep the mill levy, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a little bit of increase in there, but there's some room. I mean, it's, we, we, we always adopt, set forth for the public hearing a, a little bit higher mill levy. So that way there's some negotiation and wiggle room, because we wanna make sure that if there are projects that the commission does wanna look at, um, that aren't already identified, then we can potentially look at those. But as of last year, we tried to do a mill levy increase for last year, but we ended up being, did it, it went down, didn't it? Did it go up or down, just to hear? It was, it was, it was so close to being what it was, we thought we were going up a mill, but it ended up being like point zero, zero something, I mean, it was negligible. And this twenty seventeen proposed budget, believe it or not, um, has a two percent COLA built into it too, if you can believe it.
Hmm, okay.
And it's gonna, that, that, the COLA is gonna be contingent on the cash carryover also, and it's also gonna be, well, not necessarily contingent on cash carryover. It's gonna be more contingent on the health insurance premium where they come back, so, and we'll talk more about this next Tuesday. But if, if the health insurance comes back with a huge increase, we'll have to look at that COLA to, to.
How soon will we get the health premium?
It's usually, it's usually first part of August is when we get it, so we'll have it bef- typically have a good idea, I mean, but, but before it's adopted, we have a pretty good idea where it's gonna be, so.
We pretty much expect it to go up a little bit, don't we?
Yeah, we, we put a ten percent increase in there. Um, and then the final page, just for your di- just digest it before our next meeting, uh, is there requests that have been brought forward to us for the external agencies? We brought the larger request in front of you, um, you know, like the museum and the library, that there are two larges. C V B is basically a pass-through, you know, if we have it, we give it to them because it's dedicated funding source for them. Um, outside of that, it's really kind of, um, it's either dictated by agreement or it's a pretty insignificant amount of funds. So, well, we can discuss this more at our, at our budget meeting next Tuesday, but the budget that you have in front of you, as of right now, has these numbers as proposed. Or as requested on that external agency sheet.
I would also like to commend, uh, the departments for making cuts, so we wouldn't have to borrow money. We can't.
Yeah, one of the things, items we are gonna be looking at, because we do need to look, we need to look at it, at, at another big project, because we have two debt service payments that are coming off, so I think it's time to take a look at a significant road project. And so next Tuesday, you're gonna see, um, we're gonna be proposing, looking at doing, um, Summit Street from Kansas Avenue to Radial Lane. Finally doing that, um, looking at turn lanes and sidewalks and elimination overhead cleanup of that area, so. And we can do that without a mill levy increase as well. If we start the planning of it now, start design, start right away acquisition, I think that we're gonna be okay, so. But we gotta get working on that, because interest rates right now at our all-time low, fifty-year low right now, they're at two percent for a twen- ten to twenty-year debt service. Which we'd only do ten-year on a road project, cause that's all we do on road projects. And, um, the cost of construction increases far greater than the interest rate, um, difference. So we, we really need to be looking at issuing debt for a road project, especially since we have debt coming off here in a couple of years, so. But we'll talk about more next week.
All right.
Outside of that, um, I do have Mr. Brown, uh, he brought to my attention a, a, a home that is in imminent need of demolition. So he's trying to ding the budget again.
Everybody saving money but me. Unfortunately.
And we've talked about this home several times before at a commission or study session. This is the home where the basement collapsed on one side, um, it's on south, or North Second?
North Second, or First?
Fr- Second.
North Second.
North Second. And the other side, this is the, this is the other side of the house now.
This is the north side.
Okay.
That's the one that I told you I thought was gonna collapse, and I needed a structural engineer back in, um, October of two thousand fifteen. Um, it did collapse. And if you'll notice, you can't see this side here, but it's just as bad in there, it is worse, it's fixing to continue to go in. Another picture. You can see, back in October, when I first started this, you can see how it was, all the way across, right back to here in the front, it's the same, you see that on the picture?
But isn't this, that picture there though, isn't that the, uh, south side of the building?
No, that's the north side, that was before it caved in.
Oh, that was before it caved in?
Yeah, that's before it caved in.
Okay, so then back up a couple of slides.
That's what it looks like.
And that's what it looks like today.
That's what it looks like today, yes. Keep going. Another one.
There.
This is the chimney, cracking away from the structure. It's literally, the building turned to lean to the north. Another one. Out to somewhere. Keep going. Keep going.
Was, was this the, was this the house that?
You're supposed to have, you're supposed to have the front porch. Didn't get it, okay?
Yeah.
Was this, was this the house that, that somebody had tried to sell to somebody else after you condemned it?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I want you to see the pictures first, this is the front porch, and if you look at it, you can notice how that's leaning.
What's the address?
The porch is coming away from the structure to the east, it's leaning to the north.
What is the address?
Huh?
What is the address?
About twelve point five, North Second.
North Second. I know where this is.
There's, there's nobody in it right now?
No.
I wouldn't let anybody out, in and after, uh, October.
Well, in October, there was a gentleman that was, was living in there.
He was living, living in the Winnebago drawing power from the neighbor to the north.
I remember all that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I remember you talking about it too.
And he was gonna fix it up, right?
Away from the structure to the north, and it's leaning to the north.
Okay.
See that front porch?
Twelve twenty.
Five.
Twelve twenty seven.
Four twenty seven. And the rest of this we saw?
That's same as you saw, yes. So then I found out that she signed, or she sold the property to a gentleman that lives directly to the north of this. Um, when I found that out, I sent a letter to him, certified letter, saying, hey, you now have a problem. You bought a house that you can't buy, and it's been condemned, did she tell you? No. Well, he, uh, he went back to the, the, pardon me, the ordinance that we have is IP MC Section one oh seven point six. You can't transfer the ownership of the property that's been condemned. The judge ruled in his favor, made her pay him back, and she got the building back. So, um, I've been trying to get a hold of her, I, I noticed after that point in time, I tried to get a hold of her, I can't get a hold of her. And then we drove by the other day and saw that, uh, that. So I'm here to tell you that I think the rest of the foundation's gonna go, and, uh, tilting of the building right now could cause that to continue to go to the north, possibly into the neighborhood, you know, so.
In a traditional, in a traditional process, if we were to go ahead and bring it in front of the commission to declare it a dangerous surface structure, what is that timeline? I mean, can you explain the timeline, because I know we have to give them notice, and I believe it's a thirty-day notice prior to a public hearing, I have to do a public hearing. And then the commission has to either make a decision whether to allow them to tear it down themselves.
Give them more time to take care of it, and this and that, you're looking at the least sixty days, and most of the time ninety-day process.
And he came to me, Mr. Brown came to me last week with this new information, because they just went back and visited it. And it's degraded so much that he would, he has the authority to declare it an imminent danger, which would require no commission action. Um, and have that structure removed, so that's why, but he wanted to come, and I wanted him to be in front of the commission to try to get your thoughts and ideas on which route you would take, because him knowing that it's potentially could collapse, we, we, we do run the risk of if it were to collapse and something were to happen, we could potentially.
Property or physical damage that happens at this point in time now is.
Is our responsibility.
Would be our responsibility, because I didn't act on something that I know I shouldn't.
So nothing would go back on the owner?
But we would go after the owner, of course.
We would go after the owner, but what are you, you gonna get? And how long are you gonna take to get?
Yeah, yeah.
A, a ten million dollar debt award, you know, uh, uh, and that's probably extreme, but it might not be.
Yeah.
I can't take that chance.
So we, but we wanted to bring the, to your attention, to have you give us some guidance, because he feels it's an imminent danger. And he feels it needs to be removed immediately, however, and he's prepared to take that action.
Mm-hmm.
But we would like to have at least.
Your blessing.
Your blessing before we do that.
Which, which way is it falling?
It's falling to the north, it, it's leaning kinda towards the north.
And there's a house right next to it to the north?
Correct.
And we've been having earthquakes.
Yes.
What?
Chief Wolf, what happens if this house gets us, catches on fire?
So, the problem is that there are a lot of structures.
No, it's real close to.
More so in town, and unfortunately, sometimes, well, especially in the middle of night, it's hard to tell where we got a volatile structure. So it puts our personnel in, in great danger, cause, uh, as you can see, with the foundation going, if we didn't spot that in the middle of night, and put crews inside, you know, that's gonna be an issue, so. As far as training, fire, oh, I, we couldn't use it that, it's just too far gone.
It's that bad.
And plus the EPA.
Yeah, you gotta, and you gotta go through that, you can't ever get it. If their men was to go in to fight a fire, not knowing this, that floor in there is not supported by anything now, and they should certainly fault it. That's why I made sure nobody getting in there to work or anything, until I got a structural engineer, I don't know anyone now.
So, i- i- so if you declare this an imminent danger, wh- what's the process?
I go and get three bids and I get it tore down, then we have to build the owner.
Okay, and then we, we go after them with their taxes on their current house?
That's on this house right here.
Yeah, on that property.
And property.
Yeah, it would go on the property, and when I went in there, I'd take the old rickety garage too, at the same time.
Just clean a lot of.
Yeah, and, um, I have visited with Cameron, she says the same thing, so.
So if we tear this down and she decides to sell the property, can she still do that?
After I get, well, after she clears the lien with the city.
Okay, okay.
We'll still have a lien on it.
Okay.
And I've tried, gentlemen, and let them out, several times since Thursday, when I visited with, uh, trying to get a hold of them, send a letter.
Yeah, works, works.
No reaction back at all from them, and the neighbor to the north said they came over and mowed the front yard, but they didn't go back to the back. And said they wasn't gonna do nothing with it until at least next summer, maybe not this, so.
Oh, wow.
It's a good way to make something.
Not as bad as it is.
So that's basically one, trying to get your comfort level, do you want us to go through traditional channels and means, or would you rather take them in a danger route and have it removed?
Which, what's your professional opinion, do you think it's gonna fall down any time soon?
I was, I knew it would have brought it to me if you didn't think so.
My professional opinion was in October, when I first talked to Nick and Eric, I was seriously concerned about that. I was seriously concerned about that wall, and I wanted a structural engineer before I let anybody go in there, because I thought it was gonna collapse.
Right.
I think the house has been collapsed.
And if we continue to get more rain, it's gonna, it's gonna weaken anymore, right?
Seen under a lot of this in the twenty-four years.
Yes.
And she tried to, before, or the land, previous landowner, or the current landowner now, tried to just give it away before it was away from it.
Yes.
Some of it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, she tried to give it away for fifteen hundred dollars.
So she knew, or they knew, don't know if she.
Start tomorrow, it's, it's okay.
Thomas, um, you go that process, we can't use our own crew?
That's another option that we're gonna try to do, yes, I will get a bid from them, and a bid from a couple others, and that'll be on record then. And absolutely, they're doing a good job.
Cause we put, we put together a quote, basically, where it'd be for us to do it, because the manpower, and the equipment time, and the tipping fees. To see how we compare, I mean, because we'll try to recoup it, because if we went to assess it on the taxes, we wouldn't have those costs anyway, so.
We'll definitely use our.
They are doing a good job.
If we tear it down, we have to take it out to the county dump, right?
Right. But like I said, he would get a few bids, we would put together basically an internal bid, and then we would weigh that.
Yeah.
You know, and see where we fall, because if it's cheaper for us to do it, of course, we're gonna do it, if we can. But you know, the two large structures that we've done, they're just been too big for us to handle.
Right.
But we have done a two-story home, though.
We've done a small two-story home, done, done it very good, I had no problem with working with the city crews. They know that they've got a bid in, just like I would get it from a general contractor for, for lookworth and taxes and this and that, yes.
Well, to repair this house would, would cost more than the house is ever gonna be worth.
No, they, yeah, they couldn't.
So I, I say go ahead and do it.
It's well beyond the fifty percent.
Yeah. I'm, I, I think the commission's in agreement.
I would say, I, I would be the.
Do what you need to do.
I'd say I'd rather do the, the, the standard method of go on the, uh, the, the normal route, where we.
For another ninety days, then you're taking the risk, because I'm giving it to you now, I've done my job.
And the rest of the commission doesn't have to, I'd rather go that way, but I mean, I'm one person.
Which is why we brought it to your attention, because, because we wanna do the pro, we wanna be fair, because.
Yeah, and I'd rather.
And we've already been trying to do the original route since October last year, so.
We just haven't went through the formal commission action to declare it a dangerous.
You need a formal?
We, we have to, we'll have to advertise it, we'll have to get it on the agenda for next, we'll have to set a date for public hearing, which will be a minimum thirty days, I believe, and we'll have to do two notice.
Imminent danger, we skip over.
Yeah, imminent danger, but if we went through just traditional route.
Okay.
I'd be more comfortable with traditional route, if it's an imminent danger, you gotta do your job.
I gotta do my job.
But if it's, I mean, that's.
And this is the only.
If you're gonna ask me though, I'd say do the other route, if you really think it's an imminent danger, it should be down.
This is the only ones that I'll ever bring to you in imminent danger. I've got some that's, looks as bad, looks worse, but structurally isn't a bad official.
Or, or, so would we still have the, the approval at next meeting?
No, no.
If it's imminent danger, he's gotta do it.
He, he's just gonna take care of it, he's, so he's basically giving you the notification that he has, he has made a determination, it's an imminent danger. He wanted to update the commission to let them know that he deems this structure as an imminent danger. If there, if, if there's no huge heartburn, he's gonna get it taken care of.
Okay, so if, if we do, if we do the imminent danger, you tear it down, the owner decides that she wants to sue us for damaging her building?
We stand on good grounds, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll say the pictures and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've got pictures, and I'll take the pictures as we're tearing them down.
Okay.
You need us to tell you to go do it?
Nope.
Don't need nothing.
Just wanted you to know, unless you put a stop to me, I'm gonna do it.
Just do your job. Just do your job.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anything else?
I don't think so.
Anybody? Okay.
I guess I'll say one other, I think if this wasn't, if this was, uh, I guess I, the way I see it, if it's an imminent danger, you should just take it down. I mean, that's the reality.
I thought you said, but we wanted to.
If it's not, and you can come to a commission meeting about it, then it's not an imminent danger.
And, and we will do that, we're going to have some, um, structures that.
Okay, so I do appreciate, and we have asked Nick and other, that we'd like to, we'd like to know about things that are going on in the city, so when they ask. But at the same time, I mean, it's something where, if the building's gonna stand for ninety days, then let's do the normal route.
So far, there's about a hundred and twenty-six more that I flag without even looking, so.
Sure.
We'll see more.
See more, okay.
Yeah, and, and if this building was on a lot by itself, nothing else around it, we'd probably go the ninety days, but being in the neighborhood where it's at, I, I think we're.
I would, I would advise you to tear it down, even under those circumstances, because we have kids that go and play.
And set fires.
And you cannot take the chance when it's this bad.
Is any, are there any kids right now playing?
This, this, he can keep this kid from going over and play.
Okay, can't keep them, huh?
And he can, it's hard to keep kids that.
Okay, do your job, get it torn down.
Move or adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Tweedy, seconded by Commissioner Yukovich, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?